Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a very important meeting for the board and would like to make everyone aware, the public who might be watching or listening, that what we will be doing this evening is interviewing a number of candidates, three different candidates, for the position of Director of the Senior Center. We have with us obviously the three selectmen and also Arthur Rach, who is, I think, the Chairman of the Council on Aging. So he is the person who will lead the committee, which helps and monitors, okay, the work of the Senior Center. And this Director obviously has, you know, a responsibility to respond to the COA, okay? So just to let you know that, we're very happy to have you here tonight as a candidate for this position. And I guess what we'd like to do is to just talk to you a little bit about, why don't you come up to the table? That's fine, you could stay back there though, if that was more comfortable for you. Otherwise your back is...
I'm back to everyone.
Yeah, well, you could certainly sit in the corner there, it's a more kitty corner. We had not asked people to do that because the sun was just glaring in here, but now that it's not, if you'd prefer to have an opportunity to look a little bit towards people.
I don't know where the camera is.
Everywhere.
The camera kind of follows you a little.
One there, two back there.
The individual that we're welcoming, welcoming tonight is Stephanie Maznick. And her interview is ready to start, and I would just ask you to give us a couple, you know, reasons why you're here tonight, why you think this might be a job to fulfill your, you know, work responsibilities, and what you're looking for in this particular position.
Oh, ah, well, I am here because I've really always wanted or thought that I would eventually be involved with the Senior Center. I absolutely have a passion for the elderly, the senior population. It's just what I absolutely love, I love it. I have had some great experiences in my previous jobs, I've learned a lot. And I saw this position come up, so I thought I would stay close to home. I have little ones that will be entering the school system, so I would love to be around. And see faces that I know. I don't know if I'm supposed to point that out or not, but I see a lot of familiar faces in here, so it would mean a lot to work with the people that I live with, in my community.
Okay. Any other comment you'd like to make before we get started with some specific questioning? Because we're going to be asking you specifically, when you talk about you've had some experience working with the elderly and/or we seniors, I'll put my potty on that cable.
Yeah.
Why, again, why did that, what were those experiences?
Probably you name it, I've had them. I mean, I've gone from hands-on care, assisted living facilities, nursing homes. And then my last, my previous role that I gave up when I had my daughter was for Fallon Navigator, which is a specific insurance for the senior population.
Okay.
So I was a case manager for many, many seniors in our area, really.
Okay, so you've had some experience in that?
Yes, lots, lots of...
Don't be shy, you know.
Lots of, I'm just, I'm really nervous, I'm really sorry.
I can tell you're really nervous.
There's a lot of people here. Yes, lots of experience. So I was a care manager. We, I connected with their primary care providers to get services set up in home, transition them to a nursing home or a skilled nursing facility if they needed to. I worked closely with the ASAP Aging Services at West Point in Worcester. I did more of my work with Monticlet, but I know Barry is Worcester. Getting different services set up for people and meals, you know, meals, laundry, services, you know, home health aides, any service that Navicare would provide, really, we would work with the ASAP to get that set up and make things successful for them to live at home.
Okay, I think probably the next question might be yours, Mark, did you have...
Yeah.
Would you just go with what number it is so Sandy can keep track of us?
Yeah, I have a number twelve, Sandy.
Okay.
In your experience, what would be the key to developing a good team? Because obviously you need a team.
Communication. Communication is unbelievably important, in my experience. Honesty, dedication. And they need to have a passion for what they're doing. You need to love what you're doing, or you're not gonna be successful. As far as, as far as a team, though, can you be more specific? Like, for me to hire somebody as a team or to work with the COA as a team?
Work with...
Communication.
There's a lot of different personalities down there.
Yes, yes. I have experienced in my past some range of personalities. But I think as long as you listen to what people have to say and try your best to hear them, to show you that you're hearing them, and to make changes as best you can. And it's okay to ask for help, I think people have difficulty asking for help sometimes. But I think communication, I think, is the best and the greatest necessity of a team.
John?
Sure, so you could just share with us what the first three to six months on the job would look like, from your perspective?
Wow, I would love to sit in on some meetings with everybody that's involved, listen to the concerns. I have not been involved with Barry Senior Center, so I'm not privy to what truly goes on there. I would like to listen to what concerns people have, what they're looking for. I think a goal of mine would be to include and gain members down there, gain some more people, maybe people that are more isolated. That is really one thing that I would, and again, I haven't sat in, so I'm not sure if... It seems like a lot of people are very active. It's an active senior population around here, from what I can see. But I would like to try and outreach to people that aren't as active or maybe don't have as much family or community time here, to get them out.
Arthur, would you have a question?
Um, if you walk into a Senior Center, it doesn't have to be the one down here, what would you have as an expectation walking in and what would you like to see going on in the Senior Center?
Ooh, what would I expect? I would expect warmth and love. I feel like, I feel like that is an important thing. I would want to see activities happening. I would want to see, you know, people's interests being met. I want to see physical activities going on as well as cognitive activities, you know, learning about stuff, having somebody come in and put on, you know, from the Historical Society, get the community involved with the Senior Center. But I think involvement and acceptance is what I would want to see, is what I would expect to see.
Okay, moving along, Mark, do you have another question, or that's it?
Seventeen. How do you intend to create a positive workplace culture?
A positive?
Positive.
Communication. I'm going to go back to communication again. Humor, interest. I have, you need to listen to what people are interested in in order to get them to come and enjoy. Openness, I would prefer to immerse myself in and not sit at a desk. I don't, not that that's a, you know, I'm not a publicist sitting at a desk, but I want to be part, I want to come down and have coffee and have talks and listen to what everybody has to say and share. And the stories of... What I've found, especially with the more advanced aged people, they love to talk about their past. And even though I might not know who they're talking about, it just, you can see it in their face that it brings them joy. And just to listen to that, it's special.
Okay, let me ask you a little more nuts and bolts kind of question. What kind of relationships have you had with either another Senior Center, with maybe a Council on Aging, the Office of Elder Affairs, Worcester Area Elder Services and stuff?
Well, it's been years. I haven't worked in five years now.
Yeah, that's been years, yeah.
Yes, it's been years. So I think a lot of probably the people that I worked with, the connections that I had there have changed at this point. But I don't imagine their job has changed all that much, so I'm not too concerned about, you know, making the connections with the people at Worcester.
So you've worked with these area agencies before in support of elderly populations?
I have.
Okay.
At length. We would, you know, we, part of our case management would be to go to people's homes, especially upon when they first were signing up for Navicare. So it would be myself as like the case manager, the nurse case manager, and then we called them the GSSC, but they're the people that worked for the ASAP, Worcester, Elder Services. And we would meet with the member and then their family sometimes and, you know, review their health. I mean, we did a bunch of screening, obviously the nurse case manager did her thing, but we would get services set up in place, so we were a team, we were all a team. So I have a lot of respect for those, the people that work there. It's a, it's a job, for short, to get the services set up, and then they're constantly changing. And I know that we have difficulty out this way because it's not as available for people that need the home care in home. But, yeah, I have daily experience with them previously.
Service providers, so that would not be a shock to you to have to interface with them on a regular basis to, in order to provide services for the people who would be, you know, part and parcel of the Senior Center?
Absolutely, nope, not a surprise at all. In fact, I would, I would hope, I would like to get, you know, a conference set up with them and have them come out here to go over the services that are available. As well, I mean, there's other insurance companies that specifically work with the seniors, but in my experience, Fallon has been great. So I would love to get, you know, them out to explain what they have available for people as well. So, info sessions.
Could you just talk a teeny little bit about, you, obviously you've made application for this position, so my guess is you've done a little snooping around, to figure out, you know, what's happening there, what facilities we have available, have you ever been to the Senior Center?
Oh, yes, I've gone, I've been, the car show last year, I've been down there.
Yeah.
What do you mean snooping around?
I mean, if this were, if I were contemplating applying for this job, I would be saying, what's going on down there? Who's running the show? Are there problems down there? Is everything copacetic? Will I be just welcomed with open arms? Do I expect that, you know, I have to work to kind of...
Sure. I have heard some stories. I'm not going to take them at face value. I want to see really what's going on, I want to see really where people's concerns lie.
You're doing well.
Work, no, I'm just trying to figure out how to word it. I don't, you know, people's, people have opinions and you can't judge by one person's opinion, you need to get the whole scoop. So I have, I've heard minimal, I have heard minimal.
Minimal is good.
But for me, I would prefer to see what is going on by speaking with the people that are running, in charge of it, or that are there daily. And then I would also like to speak to people that go that aren't necessarily directly, you know, involved with the COA, to see what their thoughts are and to see how they feel about it and to see what their experiences are down there, too. I want people to feel welcome down there. Would make that a goal, I would make that a goal.
Okay, thank you, John?
Yeah, so what are some long-range objectives that you've developed in your last job, or any jobs you've had? And what did you do to achieve them?
Long-range objectives. So, my job, my objective was whatever the best outcome was for that particular member. And that's what I went for, and it was ever-evolving, because people are always changing, needs are always changing. So I can't specify for one person it would be X, Y, and Z, but successfully staying in their home was my biggest objective. And that was for each one of, you know, my eighty-five members that I had. And it was a lot of work, and it took a ton of feetball. It wasn't just me, I can't take responsibility for that, but I worked with a great team to get services set up from the, you know, Elder Services and the case manager and the care managers. We had different, so we were the, I say we, my role was community navigator. We also had long-term care navigators at Fallon. So if a member fell and hurt themselves, then they had to transition to a nursing facility. We would meet with the team that they'd be going to to continue their services. It was always just to be, so that they were successful in their house, in their home, with the services that they had available.
Mark?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Tell me about a time, if there ever was one, where you managed a difficult team or department?
Well, I have not managed a difficult team per se, I have definitely managed some difficult members. They were part of our team, so I would like to, I would like to expand on that. Their family, their nurse case manager, myself, the GSSC, and their primary care provider were their team, that was their care team. And I definitely had some difficult members. But what I found is if you listen to them and you validate what they're upset about or what their, you know, what their issue is, and try and walk them through it, it turns around, and they're not super difficult. Because you're taking an interest in them and taking an interest in what's upsetting to them. And even though you might not be able to do what they want you to do, communication, you have to explain to them, and you need to listen to them. And probably, I've not run a department, I've not experienced that yet.
John?
So, if you could just take a minute and tell us why you should be the next Senior Center Director, what attributes do you think would set you apart from other candidates?
Well, I've said it before, I'll say it again, the senior population is my passion, I love, I love them. I will go out of my way to help where I can and when I can. I enjoy their company and I want what's best for them. I want them to be successful, I want, I want people to live happy, healthy lives as best they can. And you might not be able to manage everyone, but you can manage, you know, some and make a difference in their lives. So I really think that, I think it will be my passion and my drive to make people feel comfortable and cared for and, I think, I think that.
Thank you.
Okay, another nuts and bolts one for me.
Yes, sorry.
Working at the Senior Center would require a person who's successful, to manage a facility, to worry about bathrooms and cleaning and, you know, when the custodian's coming or when they're not coming, to look for a grant when we need a new roof, probably not soon, but a new roof or whatever. What experiences have you had with that kind of management? Where it's really management of a facility itself, let's not talk about the people at this point. Talk about getting the nuts and bolts of that Senior Center so that it is a safe, welcoming place for everyone who wants to, you know, be there and participate there.
So, part of my, my job at Summit Elder Care was to keep the environment safe for our participants. A lot of that is common sense. I think... So I'm currently, currently working for the town of New Braintree, Highway Department. I was just hired last month. I've had a few trainings on budget management. I just completed my first outreach for a grant this week. So I am learning, I'm currently learning about those things. I do have support, I believe, from people in the community that have also done that. So I'm not super concerned about, you know, completing the grants or finding grants. As far as managing, you know, somebody to come in and clean, assuming somebody's already in there to do that, but I, I'm, you know, not opposed to making sure that things are done correctly. And I'm not opposed to getting down and getting dirty either, if I need to. Yeah, I think...
Do you have a willingness to really do what you need to do to get the job done?
Yes, absolutely. I have done some very messy things in my time, but yes, I, it's a Senior Center, though I think it's probably not going to get that crazy. But definitely will, will get it done, I will get it done, what needs to be done.
Mark? You're good.
I just have the last question, in case you have another one.
I always have one, but go ahead.
Well, just, if you have another one, go ahead.
Okay, so we talked a little bit about the facility. You know, obviously transporting and making sure people have access to, you know, a ride, you know, who don't have their own transportation, managing those sort of, shall we say, buses and so forth. Also trying to think about what, how do you feel about the fact that Hardwick sends a group of people, you know, they sort of participate in the Senior Center located in Barry, but, you know, there is a group from Hardwick who come and participate in some of the programming and so forth. What outreach would you think would be necessary and appropriate to ensure that that group, while not Barryites, feel welcome and part of the, part of the program there?
Well, including them, I would, I would hope that they felt included and they're specifically looking for like the transportation, you mean, like making it manageable for them to get there?
Yeah, making sure they have a way to get there and facilitating that. Then once they get there, that they understand that they're part of the group and can participate in the programming and so forth that's there, have access to what medical interventions are available when we talk about whether it's Medicare or whatever. How would you facilitate that?
I would call the bus company and make sure they were available to pick up, if they're being picked up from, you know, a certain location or from their home. I would also have a running list of contacts for all of these people, whether they're in Barry or Hardwick, to, whether it's phone or email, to let them know that we're going to be providing this info session or this, you know, activity so that they're aware of it, because people aren't aware of it. I'd also manage the website to let, you know, keep that updated with all the information that would be going on. And, you know, when they, they got there, when any of them got there, I'd like to sit and chat with them and make them feel welcome. And, you know, people have their friends that they come with, I understand that. But to sit and listen and chat with them and make them feel comfortable, just like I would with anybody from Barry as well.
Okay, how do you feel about managing relatively a significant amount of money, you know, in...
Well, it's frightening.
I mean, as far as, as far as what, you know, the Senior Center budget is and, you know, a lot of it obviously is directed with Tammy, you know, and her work as the town administrator, but learning that strategy, being comfortable showing up in front of the Budget and Finance Committee and explaining what the needs were for the particular group that you represent. Have you done that ever before?
I, I mean, not for finances. We met for, you know, our care plans to go over what these members needed. I had no issues speaking in front of them for tho, you know, for those services and what they needed for that. Managing a lot of money...
You don't get to touch it.
Yeah.
You get to say, okay, I've got five hundred dollars or five thousand dollars in this account.
And I can do X, Y, and Z with it, yeah. That, I, I'm not, I'm not concerned, I feel like I will be able to manage that quite well. I am doing the, not doing the budget, I am managing the budget for my supervisor over in New Braintree right now, meaning I'm, you know, I let him know what we have left. And he makes the decisions on what we're spending it, but, you know, I'm familiar with how that works at this point.
So working, so working in town government isn't something that you're afraid of, something that you've become, you know?
I'm not a pro at it quite yet, but I'm, I'm learning and I'm not afraid to learn it, no. I'm actually enjoying it, there's a lot more to it than I ever thought there was, especially when it comes to the state and the money. But, yeah, it's, it, I definitely would be able to...
If I were to ask you, you were the successful candidate. One year from now, what could I anticipate, the successes of what, you know, aspects of the Senior Center? What would happen down there?
I'd like to increase the population. I would like to bring in more people, and I'd like to bring in more activities and education for what their interests are, whoever is interested. I'd like, I'd like to sit and talk to them and see, hey, what are you interested in? What would you like to learn about? What, what could I do to make you change, to make, you know, to make you want to come here? I think that is probably, that would be my biggest goal, is to get people out of their houses and doing activities, engaging, learning, and interacting with each other, and bringing that community.
Would you have any aspirations for looking for other agencies within the community where they could cooperate and maybe do cooperative programming?
Yes, I have. I'd like to get in touch with the library, the Historical Society, the PTO up at Ruggles Lane, and/or Ruggles Lane. Yeah, the...
The children.
The kids, yeah, to have, especially around Christmas time. I can envision, you know, a little chorus concert of Christmas tunes for everybody to come and enjoy. And, I mean, obviously they'd have to be willing and, but I definitely would like to tie everyone together. to tie everyone together. I want to bring, full circle, I want to bring everyone out into the community, I want, I want, I want people to enjoy and people to feel wanted and be important in it.
Okay, so now's your time to, you can ask us some questions that you might feel you would benefit from having information from our side of the table that would be helpful to you as you consider this candidacy.
So, if I were the successful candidate here, would I be reporting to the Select Board or to the COA or to both? Or to Tammy?
Technically, technically, the town administrator would be your, you know, sort of immediate supervisor, she represents the board, obviously, and technically, the board has the responsibility of hiring, negotiating a contract, doing and carrying out an evaluation. However, all of our work is impacted and influenced by the Council on Aging. So, your relationship with the Council on Aging is, is of critical importance and their, and their communication with you and your communication with them is critical. So, while, while we sit in the last thing and hold up our hands and hire a person or whatever, it is not without the influence of our town administrator for certain and who would be the immediate supervisor, so to speak, or without the council of the Council on Aging. Sometimes that gets really confused and people think the Council on Aging can hire and fire and, or Tammy can hire and fire on her own. No, like the, the board has to ultimately hire and ultimately, if they wanted to, you know, have someone not be working in the town of Barry, that that would be the responsibility, at least at the senior center. It's different for other agencies in, in the town, but for your situation, if you were the successful candidate. Any other questions?
What would you like to see?
What would I like to see?
Out of, out of me, a year from now?
Okay, I will let everyone contribute to that because I always have something to say, but make it bright.
So, I, I, I think you actually hit a good bit of it when you were talking about your one-year goal, I want to see, you know, involvement, I think the outreach part, getting more people involved who don't normally get out there is critical, you know, helping people to feel that they have a place, that they're welcomed, I think that's, that's critical and, and obviously, you know, increasing programming. I, I like to take a long-term look at things too, as far as grant funding, things like that. You know, our, our senior center became dementia-friendly not too long ago through, I believe that was a grant involved in that and, you know, setting up, so doing that day-to-day, but also having that long-term vision and moving towards those long-term visions, I think is key for me.
I'd like to see a lot of positive attitudes, I'd like to see people from other towns come in, I, you know, as far as the seniors, I'd like everybody to feel welcome. You know, this, I think it's really important as you get older, I mean, there's less and less things that they have to look forward to and I think they need, you know, it's, it's really important that, that it's a place that they can, they know they can come to and it's not going to be a problem. They feel welcome with all the rest, you know, certain groups or anything like that, things like that, you know, I mean, I, it's, it's all about them. It's all about the seniors and I want them to be happy. And however you got to do it, get it done.
Do it, good.
Okay, one, one thing that obviously is a challenge in any, group dynamics are always an issue of concern when you have a group, whether it's a classroom of children, whether it's a, a group of seniors, whether it's a group of people who want to play, I don't know, Cornwall, cornhole, pole wall, whatever it is, whatever it is, okay, there, there are leaders, there are detractors, there are, there are people who, who, who join the group and bring the group more closely together and somehow, that all has to be managed so that, as Mark says, everyone feels welcome and important and, and part and parcel of the organization. That is the biggest challenge when everyone works with people, I'll be perfectly honest with you. And without a focus there, it will be a rough ride. The Council on Aging has great insight that they can share, it doesn't mean everyone will share the same insight, it would maybe give you a collaboration of information that you might have to, you know, sift through and say, okay, what's my best next step? Those will be the very difficult decisions for anyone who's a successful candidate in a, in a situation where we have two different towns trying to cooperate in, in, in a situation, that's always, you know, a challenge. People who have done something a certain way for the last five years and now there's a new sheriff in town. It is, this is not an easy transitional job, I have to be very honest with you, it's taking over a situation where many people have many ideas, some people have felt slighted, okay? That has to be fixed somehow. I would say that the most important thing is to make that environment, the way you described it, when, when Arthur asked you the question about what would you like to see, that, and that is a tall order, I don't want to minimize the, the challenge that this job is. This is not one of those jobs that I would say, oh, just about anybody who loves seniors can do this job. I think you have to love, love people, okay? And you have to be concerned about their needs and their response and how their responsibilities, you know, merge, they, they take, they take care of each other as well as you take care of them. And to, to create that, you know, atmosphere is going to be such, I believe, the challenge that lies ahead. Doing the budget, Tammy can teach you. Doing, fix, making sure the building is what it's supposed to be, he's really good at that. Mark, Mark is great at coming down and saying, well, no, don't do it that way, do it this way, okay? So, you know, you'll have support and help from the Selectmen, but you'll also have support and help from the Council on Aging. And, and one thing about the Council on Aging, they have their own struggles, their new group, getting their new group to be functional. So, I would just say, understand, if you are the successful candidate, after we do, you know, background checks and all of that stuff, please do not delude yourself that this is an easy task. This is a challenge and I think a worthy challenge and one that you seem to have the insight about, but do you have the guts to do? I mean, I mean, really, really, because I, I, two, you're going to have two good days and then, three good days and, because it's not easy. And I don't want you to think that there's not some issues that need to be resolved between and among people and participants, that we do need to put our arms around more people to participate in many more things, to find a way to, you know, have a cooperative, you know, leadership style that allows people to say what they feel and not feel as if that will be, you know, a scourge on the rest of their, you know, existence at the senior center. So, I appreciate that you came here for this interview, where, where we know we have a, a tough decision to make here, we know that the Council on Aging is, is new and they're kind of settling into their work. So, it's an, it's an amazing opportunity, but it is also an amazing challenge. And I don't know if any of you have anything to add to that, but Arthur?
No, I just have one more question, nuts and bolts question. In reading the advertisement for the position, there were two lines in it that referred to clerical support for the COA board. A lot of us are lacking technical skills in the computer area.
Not a problem.
So, can you tell us a little bit about your experience in the industry of technical?
Well, to be very honest, that is exactly why I was just hired in New Braintree, because my, my supervisor is, is very much.
Without those skills.
Without those skills. And he admits it and, so I, I mean, I have computer skills, I've Microsoft, I mean, how nuts and bolts do you want, like, no, I have familiarized myself with the computer quite well. Mass.gov, I, I'm navigating through. But clerical, I have no issue making phone calls and reaching out, doing outreach, it's not a, not a problem, I'm not shy, I'm, I am not, I don't have an issue saying, I don't know, I don't know this, I need to get back to you, I don't, you know, it's, it's all about learning, everybody has been there and I think if you know what you need to accomplish, then I can be there to support you with, you know, computer skills or forums or contacts at the ASAP or, you know, what have you in that regard? Is that helpful for you? Is that where you were going there?
Pretty much, you know, we, we don't have a computer, we don't have facilities, I mean, from a COA perspective, some obviously have it at home. But trying to get people to take their time when they're not in the center, when they're not at work or whatever, to take their free time and do that sort of activity may be difficult. So, we probably will rely on you for those skills and help time.
Okay.
That's what I was getting at.
Not, not, not a problem, I'm curious though, what, what, can you describe a little bit more on that? Like what?
We have to put out an agenda, if we want, throughout the meeting, we have to publish minutes for, for the prime meetings and that has to go into the town clerk in a certain form, timing, Mass.gov's a good place, I'll tell you that. And that's a challenge for all of us. We're lucky right now, we have someone that's, that's doing it for us that really shouldn't be doing it, technically speaking, but the rest of us, it's a struggle. So, that would be something we would look for.
That shouldn't, that shouldn't be an issue, not at all. How often do you guys meet?
Uh, once a month.
Once a month.
Glad to have you there.
Yes.
So, our, our time for the interview is, is up and I would say it's an amazing opportunity. Thank you so much for coming in and talking with us.
Yeah, thank you guys, I'm so nervous.
No, you're fine. We don't expect that we will make any kind of firm and final decision until, at best, next, next, next Monday, April first. And we probably will be, you gave, did you give us your, some people to contact about...
Oh, references, yeah, references.
Yeah, references, okay, so we're set with that. Would it be gauche for us to call New Braintree at this point?
No, that's okay, I, I'm gonna, no, he doesn't know, because I wasn't sure if I was even going to get the interview, so I didn't, but I don't plan on leaving. They are extremely flexible with my hours.
Oh, so you, so you'll just pick that up as a second job?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
So, I will let him know that it might potentially be coming, just so he's not caught off guard, because I don't want to throw him off and have him think I'm leaving, because I'm not leaving.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good. Thank you very much, it was nice to meet you.
It was nice, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I felt that, I was going to ask the COA if they had any, any insight, though, might have to go with this guy here.
Yes.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a second candidate, I believe, who will be coming in in a couple of moments. Please, if you have notes or minutes on this or whatever, please understand that that's part of the open meeting, so.
Too many questions.
Well, we had way more than we were going to use, but.
Think about a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Sarah Larico.
Hello.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, Sarah.
Welcome.
Hi, Tim.
Nice to meet you, Tammy.
John.
Nice to meet you, John.
Hi, Sarah, how are you?
Nice to meet you.
How are you?
Nice to meet you. So, I brought four.
Thank you.
You're welcome, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I want, yeah, that, that's sort of the good spot. Okay, Sarah, we're just happy to have you, you know, here with us this evening and we'll start, obviously, with asking you a couple of questions about why this job? What, you know, what has given you sort of the impetus to make application for the position? And we'd probably, if you've had specific experiences in elder services, please highlight them in sort of an introductory statement, so you sort of have a little, you know, knowledge of your background. And I guess we would say we're, we have a very, very beautiful senior center and lots of people who are very interested in this, you know, getting the right person in this position. So, with that in mind, why don't you just introduce yourself and make a little introductory statement?
Sure, so my name is Sarah Larico, I grew up in Holden, currently live in Barry with my family. I took all of my certificate classes at Mount Waukesha Community College. I went and got my teaching certificate and then got my lead teaching certificate. So, I taught for thirteen years, I taught some special ed, most everything was age three to age seven, prepping students for kindergarten and first grade. While I did that, I also had a couple of other jobs I did. I worked in, at Hawthorne Hills, which is an elderly retirement home in Rutland, and I did some PCA work there. I also volunteered my time to go in and sit and hang out and spend some time with some people who didn't have their families there. I also worked at Old Sturbridge Village during that time and I was a banquet manager. And then also, I am lucky enough to have worked at Four Corners and make the world's best lime chowder.
You notice in your, you say that you have a director of early childhood education or early childhood special education, Mount Waukesha Community College, do they offer a bachelor's degree or is this a directorship that doesn't require a bachelor's degree?
It did not require one, no ma'am.
Gotcha, okay. You work now for Vanpool.
I do.
Moving children all around, around the state of Massachusetts, I think.
I do.
It's a very busy, busy group, that's for sure.
It is a very busy group.
So, why, why this job now?
Yeah, so, I currently work for Vanpool. Absolutely love what I do. I started off with the opportunity to join the company as what was called a transportation coordinator, so I was the frontline and building the routes and meeting the parents and meeting the school districts. From there, about a year into my career, I was, I was given the opportunity and I was promoted to operations manager, so I ran in operations in Barry, about a hundred and thirty-six stands and it was very hands-on and it was.
Why don't you explain what you mean by operations manager?
Operations manager takes care of everything that happens day-to-day on the road. I take care of any of the routes that need to be built, communication with any school districts, all the payroll, all the HR, all the fleet management, anything that happens on the road was my responsibility and my responsibility to lead a group of people to be able to obtain that task that needed to be done that day. From there, I was chosen to, I bought a house in Barry and they said, oh, we're going to move you to Gertner, and I said, great, great. So, I was given the opportunity to open a new office in Gertner and take on about two hundred more vehicles. So, I now run three different school district yellow bussing as well as my special education. And then, a year ago, I was then promoted again to senior operations manager, so I work currently a new office under my belt, so I have two offices under my belt and my office in Fitchburg, I run about.
Are you just trying to escape? That is a tough one.
So, I'm now very behind the scenes and I really enjoy making a difference and I enjoy working directly with people and that's where I'm my happiest. And right now, being very technical and I still love what I do, I just miss that interaction piece and I cannot tell you how excited I was when I saw this position posted, it's the best of everything that I love.
John, you have a first question?
Sure. So, if you wouldn't mind just sharing with us, what, what do you think the first three to six months on the job would look like for you at the senior center?
Sure, so, learning who is, who is there, learning what needs need to be met, there's always a challenge that comes with, with, I would say, a large group of people and learning everybody in that group and their strengths and where we can move people around to make the best team.
In your experience, what's the key to developing a good team?
Communication, communication, communication. Everybody has strength and everybody has a place where they need to build a little more. You have to know your people that you're working with and know, find their strength, what, what makes them excited to come out to work every day or what makes them, you know, thrive in their environment. So, finding those pieces and then building your team.
So finding those pieces and then building your team that way.
So, so basically, you view the people who, you know, frequent the Senior Center as your team, as part of your team?
Absolutely.
Okay, because you will not be managing a lot of people or worrying a lot, about a lot of payroll. You will be primarily very worried and concerned and hopeful that you can develop the best environment and the programming for the seniors in, in the town of Barry and some in the town of Hardwick, because we do have a little joint agreement, cause Hardwick also participates here. What, what experience do you have in elder affairs, if any?
Sure, so I, um, in twenty, I'm gracious, um, I took care of a family member who had Alzheimer's and cancer. And I cared for him in my home, um, for two years. And I was with him every step of the way. And I then got really involved in elder services.
Uh-huh. When we say really involved in elder service, what does that mean?
Um, sure, so I met and I networked and connected with people. Um, I was able to have people come into the home to help me and realized what an unbelievably amazing organization they were. Um, and then I wanted to give that back. Somebody came in to help me on probably some of my toughest days that I ever had. Um, so I was able then to volunteer my time. And I worked with elder services to volunteer and go sit and I had five separate, um, clients that I worked with. Um, I also helped build their newsletter that they were doing. Um, and they did a few articles, um, on how difficult it is for people who it's just them, taking care of maybe a loved one in the house. And how important it is to build a team around you. And it, not a failure to ask for help. [laughing]
Uh, I, I won't ask you about, uh, transportation. I assume it's your thing.
Yeah, I kinda got that.
Okay, I figured you did, okay. John?
So, uh, what are some long-range objectives that you developed in your last job? And what did you do to achieve them?
Um, so, that's a fantastic question. Um, some of the things that I have done in my current job is we have gone from a very, um, paper company to a very technology company. And having to deploy all that new technology, um, and the transition was difficult. And transitioning a group of people who don't normally do technology. Um, so I think that was our greatest, um, success that we've had, but also our greatest challenge.
Mm-hmm. Arthur?
If you want to get to the Senior Center here at Barry tomorrow, what would you expect and hope to see?
I would hope to see smiling faces. And I would hope to see a light and a bright atmosphere. And I would hope to see that, um, the community is engaging and finding just smiles. [laughing]
Um, Mark, a crowd here.
How do you intend to create a positive workplace culture?
Um, I think just by being myself and listening. Um, you know, everybody who comes to the Senior Center comes with their own ideas and their own agendas. And, you know, there is no right and no wrong. And listening to everyone and making sure that it's a comfortable environment for everybody to come to, um, I think is...
Have you ever worked with a group of, of seniors in, okay, what do you?
I have, um, so, before COVID, um, my, um, hiring team, it was mostly retired and elderly that would...
Right.
And nobody knows, nobody understood the technology, um, of what we were doing. So, there was a lot of one-on-one that we worked with. Um, I know this is kind of a one-off, however, sometimes I always said, I think I have, um, knock and come on in on my door and everyone would come in and, you know, kind of let me know what's going on or they needed help with something. And working one-on-one with them, um, to get them the help they need. I actually just had a gentleman who came in on Thursday of last week and his wife has Alzheimer's. And I was able to make some connections for him, to get him, um, at least some phone numbers. And then we meet, we're actually meeting again tomorrow to make sure that he was able to connect with somebody and if he needed any extra help.
Well, you obviously seem to have, um, a lot of expertise in figuring out how to be successful in a job, looks to me.
Thank you.
Um, the concern that, that I have.
Please.
Is that, um, you, you lack, at least in the experience of, you know, working with elder, you know, services. Uh, okay, maybe out of Worcester, whatever, working with our local clinics and so forth to ensure that we have, you know, whether it be vacs, vaccine stuff, whether we have podiatrist visits, whether we have yoga, or stay, or tai chi, you know, providing the kind of, uh, programs that would not only be beneficial, but also, you know, engage, um, the people who would like to, you know, participate at the Senior Center. And so, what, what would you, what would, how would you approach figuring that out?
Um, outreach, definitely outreach, doing your, doing your, um, research on what's out there and making phone calls and, um, you know, seeing what's available. And there's so much in our community and there's so much in our local communities that's available. Um, and it's just making those phone calls. And, you know, it's not something I currently do, but definitely something that I am comfortable doing. Um, I also, my current job, do all of, I plan in my spare time, I plan all of, um, our events, all of our, um, employee engagements, things, um, having, you know, food trucks come in. Or we, I just started a walking club. Uh, we have a yoga group that actually comes in, um, my office in Fitchburg upstairs is a gym, so we have somebody come down during the mid-days. Our drivers who sit all day have a chance to be able to, you know, be busy a little bit. Um, so I have no problem being able to do those things.
How do you figure out what the needs are at this new Senior Center that you would be responsible for? How do you figure out what the clientele feels that they should have happening? How would you figure that out?
Listen, just listen. Being able to sit down and have conversations and hear what, what the, um, you know, what, what people need and working on it together.
Okay.
Is it John?
Is it John?
Sure. So, uh, could you just take a few minutes and tell us why you should be the next Senior Center Director? And share with us what you think would set you apart from other candidates?
Um, I think that I am very driven. I think I am, um, I think I have a huge heart. [laughing] I enjoy being able to help people. Um, I think setting me apart is not only do I, I feel as though I have those communication skills, the empathy skills, um, but I have a, um, extensive background in, um, planning and operations. Um, I also have, you know, I know grant writing is a big, you know, a big piece of this. Um, I have since applied, I have actually taken two classes on grant writing. One of the certificates is in the folder there. Um, but also, um, when working with, when working in a smaller town, we always need to be cautious of spending. Um, and so I also have, um, my LEAD belt certificates, um, where I can learn how to look at an operations and where to cut costs, um, so also be financially sound for, um, for a task.
What software programs are you, uh, do you have, do you use? And what do you feel your, your competencies are? And do you feel that those competencies, competencies could be shared with, um, the people who frequent the Senior Center?
Absolutely. Um, so I am proficient in Excel, Word, Microsoft, um, PowerPoint.
You're not a Google person.
[laughing] I am a Google person.
Oh, yeah?
I am, um, Canva, so I, I actually build and make my own weekly newsletters.
Okay.
Um, so I'm very proficient with that. Um, I also am very comfortable in, um, in being able to give classes on technology. Currently do it and I actually enjoy being able to take the time to sit down and teach something to somebody else that they may not, may not know how to do.
Okay. John?
Um, so one of the things, um, I, I have an interest in particularly for this position is, you know, there's dealing with the day-to-day and there's also establishing those long-term goals. And, uh, so how, how do you balance those?
Um, the day-to-day goals are the, you know, day-to-day goals are being able to do those small tasks. The long-term goals are being able to bring in more people into the Senior Center, being able to have, um, more activities, being able to build, um, build a group of people who support each other. Um, so those are more of the long-term. Um, also, you know, obviously being able to, um, maybe build in some grants to be able to do new things. Um, planning of, um, activities, you know, um, day trips and things, those are more long-term.
Great. Mark?
Uh, tell me about a time, if there ever was one, uh, do you manage a difficult team or department?
I love this question, yes. So the answer is yes. When you have seven hundred employees underneath you, it's usually a day-to-day thing.
Yeah.
Um, so when I have those difficult conversations, um, I feel as though the only way to be is to be kind and to be direct and to be honest. Um, because there is, you know, you have to make sure that, um, you're giving that person the same respect that you would like. Um, and being honest is the only way to be able to do that. Um, so I always, those conversations are always honest and pointed conversations.
Um, have you had an opportunity to, to visit our Senior Center or?
I have, yes. So, when our office was in Barry, um, we had gone a couple of times. We had donated a couple of turkeys and the women at the door were wonderful and super nice. Um, and I was able to go in a few times. Um, not a full tour, but to be able to go into the main areas.
Okay.
And the kitchen.
And the kitchen.
And the kitchen.
Okay. One thing that we, um, we do have a council on aging as well. And that group is, um, appointed by the select board. But have, you know, kind of day-to-day, you know, work with the senior, um, the leader or director of the Senior Center to make certain that, uh, things are going well and that, and that, I guess, that the clients, I don't wanna call them clients, but the people who participate there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, feel, uh, that they have, that they have a voice.
Mm-hmm.
And that, um, there's nobody who, you know, just runs over one part of the group, that everyone has a, a fair opportunity to participate. And that, um, things are handled in a way that this, this council on aging, who will say, "We think you should do this and this and this." And obviously with, and reasoning, they probably would have a good idea. How do you bring an idea from the senior, uh, from the council on aging? Okay, because technically they're not your boss, but they certainly are an advisory group that you have to pay, pay a lot of attention to. So, how do you, how do you, how do you manage that? If the council on aging has some disparate views and yet they're sort of, you know, helping you drive the bus? How do you, how do you interface with that?
Um, I think by hearing out a full idea. Um, everybody's ideas, you know, everybody, that's what makes this world go around, is everybody has a different idea. Um, so being able to pick out maybe the pieces where we can say, "Yes, that's something that we could definitely do." This maybe, you know, maybe we can talk about it, let's, let's see how that would work. Um, but I think also, you know, involving, um, the people of the Senior Center, because they also are the ones that are there daily. Um, I think they would, you know, being as a group, being able to have a conversation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, you know, if it's not something that we decide, um, it's always, you can always take a piece of something.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay. Um, John, you have another question?
Uh, no, no, just the, uh, just if you have any questions for us.
I do. Um, what do you see as the biggest challenge right now with the Senior Center? Um, in the next three to six months, that means, um, attention.
Well, I would say, um, interpersonal relationships.
Okay.
Among, among, okay, the clients or the people who participate there. I think some people have, have felt, um, discarded. Other people have felt that they were in the in-crowd. Um, I think that there's, and, uh, you can maybe speak to this more specifically than I can, but I, I think that there's a lot of, um, open wounds that need to be healed. I think people need to have the opportunity to, you know, feel not only heard, uh, but feel if they have been in some ways, um, not treated properly, that they get a chance to, to, to voice that. And that to bring that group together, uh, is gonna be challenging.
Mm-hmm.
I won't deny that it's gonna be challenging. And we have some new members on the council on aging, um, and so they'll be learning new things as they go on. They'll have some ideas, um, but aren't, you might be able to explain better where you see the, um, you know, kind of putting, putting things back together so people feel really valued and that their ideas are valued. And that just because somebody said something to you la, you know, four months ago, and so now you're angry and you decided you're not coming back to, that has to get fixed. And it's not gonna be easy, um, it never is when people feel that they've been discarded or in some way, you know, just run over and that they don't count anymore. We really, we really need to figure out ways in which to, um, embrace the group and understand that the group needs to move forward if the Senior Center is to be as, you know, successful as, as it has the capacity to be.
Okay.
Arthur, you have any?
Well, the board's fairly new. We have, uh, eight members right now out of nine. Uh, three have been around, myself, I haven't been around that long, three, four months. Um, others are brand-new to the board.
Okay.
So we get to know each other to a logic extent already. But there are a lot of foundations and nuts and bolts and that sort of thing
Mm-hmm.
that we're trying to work on. There's been a number of efforts in the past to write our, there's policies and procedures for the council.
Mm-hmm.
We used to call them bylaws, but we're learning.
[laughing]
And, and now we're looking at them as, um, what was I just saying?
Policies and procedures.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Senior Center moment.
[laughing]
And so, we're trying to do that while we're trying to get to know each other. There's a lot of old wounds in the Senior Center, um, where different people have not gotten along with other people. And unfortunately, some of those folks have not returned and they're holding a grudge. And what we need to do is find a way to turn that around.
Mm-hmm.
And the only way we're gonna do it is to talk.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, people have to come in, willing to talk, sit down, get the gripes out, put it aside and move on. And that hasn't happened yet. It's one of my goals. Um, the other one is, um, getting the policies and procedures finished. Because we had many versions of it that contradicted one another. Uh, for example, uh, the board should have nine members or the board should have seven members. And one group thought seven, one group thought nine, uh, and going back to where's our starting point. Uh, and then the records within the town didn't help us a whole lot because they were old and out of date and what have you.
Mm-hmm.
That's our biggest challenge, those two, two things, bringing the people together to do that work and then get there so that we, we have the environment we're looking for.
Okay.
And it's a challenge.
Mm-hmm. You can hear it.
It's a challenge.
You can hear it, yeah.
But a worthy, worthy challenge. It really is. It, uh, it's, um, there's wonderful people and, you know, many of whom, um, you know, who feel now isolated or, you know, that they're no longer welcome. That's really sad because they have lots to offer. And the people who are currently trying to, to do a lot of things without the support of others, it's hard.
Yeah.
And, um, we know that the, um, that, that our goal is to have a, a really strong, functioning, forward-looking, you know, um, Senior Center that provides services, activities, opportunities, and becomes more, more of a nexus in the community where schoolchildren are welcome to come and do stuff. And I, I think, you know, and, and that, you know, whether it be the library has certain things, that, that the area, um, you know, we have a clinic in the town, as you know. Um, but that there's real opportunities that we take advantage of and that we embrace, not isolate, if we can. So, do you have any questions of us?
Um, that was one question. And then, my only other question I have is, is there anything that you, um, currently see in regards to our conversations or my resume that may second-guess my abilities to do this job? And what would those be?
I would, off the top of my head, before I talked with your, um, you know, uh, with maybe references and so forth, would be, you don't have, you, for example, if I say to you, "Have you ever, you know, worked with the, um, you know, couns- the elders council out of the Wisters? And what did you accomplish and who do you know there?" And, you know, "Have you done that, the kind of stuff that becomes part and parcel of the job? Can you figure it out?" Yes, um, no question about it. But, um, you know, that, that would be something that, and I would say, hmm, no. You know, Worcester area elder services, you know, council on aging, executive offices of elder affairs, uh, that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, you, you know, because those, those are places that have service delivery patterns that we could take real advantage of if the... that we could take real advantage of if the, the director knows how to access that help or wants to learn really quickly how to do it.
Okay. That's very good feedback and I appreciate that. Um, I can definitely say that I do feel as though I'm up to the task for that. Um, being able to have an outreach and build a community around me, um, is, you know, what I do, just in a different space now.
Yeah.
Um, so, and I, I appreciate your feedback very much. Thank you.
Other members of the board have other?
Yeah, I, I, I think mine is, is pretty similar. It's just, you know, there's a bit of a learning curve there and, you know, being sure that you're able to establish where to find those resources to learn from. Um, so that was the only thing that I was really, you know, on there for me.
I feel Zoe, you've outlined your abilities pretty well, so, um, I don't have any other questions.
Are there any questions, other components?
I got a question.
Please.
We're, we're, we're really not gonna start to entertain, okay, a lot of ancillary questions, okay?
Microsoft Office.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
You want that?
Yes.
I told you, I was impressed because she was a Microsoft person and not a Google.
Everything I do is Microsoft. I do do Google at home, but everything I work is Microsoft.
No, I, I, I hear you. Everything in my world is Microsoft too. And then they begin to share documents in Google for me.
Yeah.
And I have to get permission.
I love those.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for taking the time to be here.
Thank you so much for meeting with me.
And we'll be definitely back in touch with you to have further conversations.
Sounds fantastic. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
We do have about ten minutes, so when something stops, I'm gonna step out for a minute.
Oh, sure. She comes a little early. We have about five or ten minutes before the next, uh, interview. If anybody wants to take a little break, just be back in about five.
I just thought that was pertinent.
Yeah.
Because somebody wants to take over the position, they need to know some skill to be able to communicate with all the offices.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I think that the, the job that she has, I'm quite familiar with, with Van Poel. And it's a big job. I'm, I, I just say to myself, um, what does she think this job pays? You know, I mean, really, because I would suspect with the, where she's at in the hierarchy, she's gotta be, unless she's looking to be home more with kids, that'd be the only thing I could think of. Because that would be the perfect job for her, to be home more with children, to be, you know, here. But, but maybe when she hears the, the salary, she will be uninterested. I don't know.
So the, the job, they might get posted with a salary?
No. I mean, certainly it's a, a public record. So, I mean, if, if anybody wanted to know what the salary was, they could look it up.
Okay, we're here tonight to totally talk with you a little bit about the position that we posted for Senior Center. The directorship there and interested in your resume, so that's why you're here. You've had a variety of experiences, I would say. You really have. You have gone to go on the waterfront in municipal work.
Very much.
So, why don't you talk a little bit about why you've decided to apply for this position? And what, you know, basic qualifications you figure you have in order to take on this kind of a challenge?
Okay, before we do that, can I just, your name or your name?
Yeah, of course.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm John.
Hi, John. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, I'm another Irishman, Maureen.
Hello, Maureen.
Mark.
Hi, Mark. Nice to meet you. Hi, Arthur.
Arthur is on our, Arthur's on our council.
Very nice to meet you. Tammy, okay, it's my, excuse me.
Okay, so now you're gonna tell us why you decided to seek this position? And what are your qualifications that you feel make it fit for you?
The reason why I decided to seek out this position is because my background is in helping people. And that's my passion is to be able to help people. And in the job that I'm currently doing, I help people, but to a point. So, what I wanna do is put my efforts and energy and time into something that's more towards what I'm passionate about. And so this job seemed to fit that the director senior, I have a soft spot for seniors. But just helping in general, I help different populations as well. I've helped veterans and caregivers and all.
Tell me a little bit about veterans when you say you help veterans.
So, in twenty, in twenty thirteen, my twenty-three-year-old son got diagnosed with brain cancer. And he was a veteran, I'm a veteran. And through that whole process of getting him through the VA system and all of that, I ended up being able to help him navigate the system, but also help others. I became an Elizabeth Dole Fellow representing Massachusetts for two years for veterans and caregivers.
Uh-huh.
Um, and helping to change legislation. I went to Washington DC, met with congressmen, senators, tried to change legislation for veterans to make it better. So, we changed a bunch of laws and helped, you know, veterans in that regard. Yeah.
Do you have any specific responsibilities for working with a senior clientele?
So, my very first job out of high school was caring for a elderly person. I think the college seniors, I guess. Is that the right terminology?
I think that's right.
Okay, so, right out of high school.
You're talking to one, so I'm not offended with senior.
Don't offend anyone. So, that was right off school. And then I was in chorus and we sang at senior centers. And my very first job in asset management was at a ninety-four unit, elderly housing unit. And I managed that for three years. And part of that was they had an in-house, like resident service coordinator who would help with the activities and things like that. So, we had someone in-house that did that. So, I worked hand in hand with that person to work with the seniors to coordinate activities and services. And, you know, as the property manager, if I saw something, if I saw someone who needed services, try to seek those services out.
No, I see that, do you have any, you know, time working with the elder services? You know, elder services in the Worcester area, probably not.
No, not in the Worcester area, no.
You're from other Hampshire, Hampshire County?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So, have you had, you know, elder services, elder transportation, anything like that?
So, with the units that we were, that I was managing, yes, we dealt with transportation. We dealt with elder services. We've worked with a lot of partnerships. Different organizations coming in, different resources for, you know, the seniors, yeah.
Okay, John?
So, what, could you, could you describe to us what your first three to six months on the job as the Senior Center Director would look like?
I think it would just be a matter of assessing what's happening. Getting an idea of what's going on, who the staff is, just kind of assessing the situation. And, you know, just analyzing what's going on. Mark?
In your experience, what's the key to developing a good team?
Um, I think that first of all, you need to listen to what's going on. Be a good listener. You need to be willing to do just as much as the team. So, you're not asking someone to do something that you wouldn't be willing to do yourself.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, I think, and being able to ask for feedback and input. Be open to other people's ideas, recommendations, suggestions, be very collaborative. That's really important.
When you say you would be very collaborative, exactly how would you demonstrate that collaboration?
Ask a lot of questions. Then, then you would know what.
I thought you were telling me I ask a lot of questions.
No, 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 no. Ask a lot of questions. And then you would figure out what you, which avenues to go. And then, you know, I don't know everything, so I would try to find someone who knew something more in that area. And I would maybe ask them questions, who did you deal with, how did you? So, asking a lot of questions, being, seeking out, if I don't know something, I'm a very good researcher. So, if I don't know something, I will definitely research and try to figure out a way to solve a problem or handle an issue or something like that. So, I would research things.
Arthur, you have a question?
If you want, I don't know, have you seen our Senior Center?
I did go there. I did drive by, actually. I didn't go inside, but I did go there.
Let's assume you, next time you go, you go inside.
Okay.
What would you expect to see or hope to see going on in the Senior Center?
I would hope there would be activity. I'm imagining going in, there might be a bulletin board that would have different things of activities that are going on. That there would be, I don't know, maybe some stations, there'd be like a library section, computers, something like that, maybe a kitchen. Something where people would be congregating, doing some sort of activities. Or somebody would be coming in doing speaking on services or something like that.
John, you have another?
Sure. So, what are some long-range objectives that you developed in your last job or any job that you've had? And what did you do to achieve those?
First, to assess the situation, I think you gotta start, have a ground zero, figure out where you're starting from. And then chart where do you want to go. And I think that would be, in this particular instance, I did look at the twenty twenty-two annual report and look at what had been some outstanding issues where the progress had been made, where some things deficiencies were. So, I think that I would figure out what my home base is. And then I would figure out what the goals of the town are, what the goals of different organizations would be. And then we would collaboratively come up with a plan to go forward. And that's basically how I've approached my jobs in the past. And I, I have been a person who's written procedure manuals, policies and procedures. So, I like to have things clear and concise. I'm kind of a rules person, so I like to have things clear and concise. And I also like metrics, benchmarks. I like to see where we are and how far did we go or where can we improve, different things like that. I'm kind of like a statistics person. I like, I like statistics.
A positive workplace culture, how would you create one?
I'm sorry?
A positive workplace culture, how would you create one?
Smile. That helps. Just smiling helps. I think to be positive, I think a clean, organized environment makes that happen when people feel like they're not consumed with clutter and different things. I think that being kind and speaking kindly to people and looking them in the eyes and, you know, just being nice, I guess, that's positive. I think you, people should be complimented for the work they do, given credit for the work they do. I think that they should be asked to contribute as well. It's not just, you know, one way that is very collaborative. So, I think that all, I think all of those things together could create a positive work environment.
If you, if you come into the, this particular Senior Center and you find that there's some hard feelings, you know, things that haven't gone quite well for part of a group, maybe some people think better for this part of the group. And so, there's some, let's, let's face it, some less than positive interactions happening. Or some people aren't even now returning to be at the Senior Center because of hurt feelings, of difficult situations that existed. We also have the Town of Hardwick, so it's some seniors also participate in the Barry Senior Center. So, how do you, how do you come into an environment where it will become patently obvious to you quickly that there's issues that have to be resolved? They can't just be papered over, they have to be resolved. Tell me, how do you do that?
So, I did twenty-five years of property management. Dealt with many populations, many.
When you say property manager, it's a big, like, place where there's condos and stuff and you manage that?
Condos, homelessness, Section Eight housing.
Okay.
Condos, high-end, low-end condos. I've done, again, at twenty-five years of housing. And that is one issue where you have a lot of different populations. You have a lot of people coming at you with different things. I don't know, on my resume, I'm the assessor, which is the least liked job in town. I have a lot of people that come into my office, especially when you're trying to change something. People coming in and they're just coming at you. But I, the approach that I always take with people is I listen to them. And I try to be understanding and compassionate about where they're coming from. Because change can be hard, especially in this population. It changes hard. And so, I try to understand and see where they're coming from, put myself in their shoes and try to figure out things, how could we do it better? Yes, maybe this was the way before, but this is a new person. Give me a chance. I'm giving, just like you give, give you a chance. So, how can we work together? It should be a place where people want to come, where people want to socialize, where people want to be part of their community. So, I just feel like listening to people is probably the best thing that you can do, not react. Because when you start reacting to things and you start getting caught up in the stories and things like that, you can, it can go very off. So, I think the best thing is to listen to people, try to meet them where they're at, try to help meet the need and try to foster a positive experience.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. John?
Sure. Could you just take a few minutes and tell us why you should be the next Senior Center Director? And what attributes you think set you apart from other candidates?
So, maybe, I don't know about the other candidates, but maybe some things that would set me apart is that I have been a recipient of public services. I have been an advocate for people that need services. I have a very long history of working in public service. So, I think that those things, besides the normal things of being very organized, I can multitask, I can do a lot of things. Besides that, what was the other part of the question? I'm sorry.
Just why, why you should be the next Senior Center Director?
I, I feel like this is a job that I would be well-suited for. It fits my personality, it fits where I see myself at this point in my life. And I feel like I have a lot to give and to, to be able to help people. That's my real passion in life. So, that's, I think that this would give me the opportunity to, to do that.
Well, you really kind of touched on it a little bit before.
Okay.
Tell me about a time, if there ever was one, that you managed difficult department or team, what was it?
I had a difficult team.
Or, yeah, how you managed a difficult department or team?
Well, self-care, that's one big huge thing, self-care. Because it can be brutal, public service, dealing in public service can be very challenging. So, you have to make sure that you fill your tank. So, being able to have self-care. And I, in difficult situations, I find, I guess with my military training, I find that I am very level. Like, I'm not, you won't see me flying off the handle, you won't see me getting outraged or anything like that. I think I'm pretty level. I think, yeah, difficult situations come up all the time. And they're not gonna be always the outcome that you want them to be. But as long as you can be respectful of somebody, as long as you can be listening and understanding. And, and I have a good way, because people come in all the time and their taxes are too high. And so, I always have the ability to say, I totally understand, I totally get it. It's happening to me too. Everything's happening, right? And so, when you, when you're able to relate to someone in a way and be able to say, yeah, I've, I've felt that too. You know, I've, I've been in your shoes, I, I know what that feels like. Sometimes that diffuses it, sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes there's just people that just, you cannot, no matter what you do, you just can't make them happy, you just can't please them. But I know for myself, I can always be respectful. And I, I think that hopefully it doesn't cause more of a situation. But, yeah, I feel like those kind of things can help.
You've got quite an extensive, you know, resume, for sure. You've done a lot of different things and with a lot of different detailed kind of work that you've had to accomplish and so on and so forth, a lot of, a lot of different things. This would be still different, but you talk about your building units and managing that. One thing that it's, it's a little different, if you don't really, if you don't like it in the building after a while, you know, move. But in, in our, in our organization, in this, in this Senior Center, we, our goal, okay, is to say, this is for everyone. Everyone has to be respected, everyone has to feel that level of respect. That's not where we're at right now. We have some disenfranchised people who feel very disenfranchised. They feel that they weren't listened to. And so, there's a chasm in there that needs to, we need to work through, we need to fix this. And I don't think it's easy and I don't think it will be quick, but it still has to happen. All of, all of the people who are, you know, qualified to participate in this Senior Center need to feel welcome. We need to ensure that the activities that we provide are meaningful to, to, to at least large swaths of people and that even smaller groups are accommodated with an art class, if that's their thing, or, or a little exercise place, if that's their thing, or playing pool, if that's their thing. But my concern just is there is a real feeling of angst and some people have pulled away from the Senior Center who have been really hard workers in the past and now feel like, I'm done, I'm done with this organization. And, and, and we feel terrible about that. And we are seeking a leadership, a person who can demonstrate a leadership style that will embrace and bring together a disparate group of people right now and move in a direction that meets the needs of seniors with elder services and transportation and all of that stuff. But also create the kind of environment where people feel valued and, and respected. And it isn't easy. So, I mean, it, there's, it's just a, it's a wonderful opportunity for those people who like challenge. And not so much for if you don't like challenge.
I love challenges. But I think that that's all of the advocacy work that I've done. I, people have told me no, but I haven't taken no for the answer. I've gone on and pushed through and, and made a change, significant change, changes. And so, I feel like this is exactly an opportunity that I would definitely embrace as I feel like I have the skill set that would, that could make that happen.
Arthur, you have any other questions? I don't need to leave, leave you out all the time.
All right. Council on Aging, the council itself, relatively new people. We're struggling to find our way. We're trying to change our culture that the board had and have, good or bad, it's different. And we're gonna need to work closely with whoever's put in that position. Hand in hand, that hasn't always been the case in the past either. At least on my part, it's been more limited for, what am I trying to say, competition personalities. And I hope that we can start new and not have that in place and somehow get the people that feel dis- dis- disenfranchised and have left the center or they come very infrequently for one activity or another and get them to come back and at least be willing to participate, talk to people and try and put those things aside. Well, we will be looking toward the new director to help with that.
I'm very good with strategic planning. I like strategic planning. I did go on and try to look at a few things on the website. I didn't see a mission statement, maybe a mission statement for the center might be helpful to develop so that that's something that people, you know, if you get a mission statement, that kind of brings everyone back to, you know, the center, why are we here, why are we doing this? So, so, yeah.
I think that ties into, to my next question really is, you know, how do you, how do you balance the day-to-day objectives, but also long-term planning? And then also with that, do you have experience with grant writing?
I do not have experience with grant writing. But I learn really quickly. And I didn't know anything about assessing when I started. I had done property management for all these years and took a chance on assessing and, and I learned that job fairly quickly. I became certified in seven months and I had two years to do it. So, I learned very quickly. So, I, I'm confident that I could do it and would learn how to do it. And what was the other part of the question?
Just how you balance the day-to-day issues that come up with long-term strategic planning?
I think you just, you have to be organized. I've been doing this so long, like, I know managing your workloads, managing different things. I think you just have to take it one step at a time. It does sound like it's a lot. And so, you just take little chunks and you just work way at it. I, I just think, can't change everything at once, but we can start small and we can, and go forward.
Okay, I got, I got another one for you.
Sure.
This is your very first day on the job. You're down at the Senior Center and a lot of people have come because they wanna see the new person. They wanna know about this person. Tell me what you would tell them?
Food, there's gotta be food. Everyone comes for food. That will get everybody there.
Yeah, okay, so you got them there, you got them there. And you've got some who's sitting like this and you got others who are. And, you know, and it's, it's your first, your first, you know, effort to say who you are and what you'd like to accomplish and how you're doing.
Yeah, I think it's just like a meet and greet, it would should be advertised like a meet and greet, come meet the new person. We're not talking about changing anything or doing anything, just let's come and let's meet each other and, and just see how it goes. And, yeah, I just would love to meet everyone and introduce myself and, yeah, just listen to what's happening.
How would you, how would you engage them in order to, that they would tell you?
I'm not shy by coming up and saying hi to anybody. I'm not shy about that.
What are you serving for food? Maybe I'll go.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not shy. I can definitely walk up to people and, and talk to people. Yeah, I, I would love to meet everyone. Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you have any questions of us?
Yes, how quickly are you looking to fill the position?
Two or three weeks if the candidate, if, you know, obviously we've got three different candidates that we're interviewing. We have some reference checks that we would need to do. And, you know, obviously the availability of the persons, because most of these individuals that we're interviewing are working somewhere else.
Right.
So, obviously there would have to be some sort of a, you know, a agreement between the successful candidate and the board as to when they could be available to start work.
Who oversees the Senior Center, the director?
Well, technically the town administrator is, you know, operates at the behest of the board.
Okay.
And we would do the actual formal hiring and so forth. But Tammy Martin, our new town administrator, would be responsible for, okay, the daily nuts and bolts. You know, how you would process your payroll, how, if you were gonna apply for a grant, anything like that. Tammy, you may wanna add to what I'm saying, but.
Any, any questions or problems, anything that goes on in the Senior Center? Turnover sheets, anything that would go on in there? Or any questions you ever had, you could come see me on anything.
So, when we're talking about the situation that we have here at the Senior Center and I, if I, if I'm the person, get a handle on it and I say, okay, now I have a vision of where this should go. So, I will go to Tammy and say, this is what, this is what I feel the plan should be.
And I think, I think also to the Council on Aging that you would be in communication with them.
Okay.
And, and so forth, you know, on, on sort of a regular basis. They have monthly meetings, but I would suspect, you know, the initial time that the new person would come on board, there'd be some onboarding opportunities for the Council on Aging. I would really ask, you know, that, that, for example, you would reach out to people who used to be on the board because there's a history.
Right.
And trying to figure out the history can help you manage the future, I believe, better. But Tammy would be the individual that you would spend most of your time with. Not that you wouldn't see maybe some of us at the Senior Center occasionally. Obviously, the day-to-day operations would be yours and Tammy's. And obviously with those, you know, sort of, they're advisory board. And they, they know a lot and can help a lot. And as he said, they're learning now too, because it's such a new board. There's been, okay, the, the change in the board and some things, there's been some stuff. I don't, I don't know exactly, but there's some people who really need, you need to hear from, as well as from the, the council. As you, as you figure out, where have they been, where do they wanna go and how do we get them there?
I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at my resume, but in the condo management, they, every condominium association has a board. And so, I've, I've dealt with many boards, many different levels. The board, the assessing job that I have right now, I have a board that I report to as well. So, I feel very confident working and with that type of structure, with working with boards and. Um, so, I feel very confident working and with that type of structure, with working with boards and, and-
Yeah, I think for, at least for the, the long-term planning, and, you know, I think a lot of that's gonna come from what the council on aging has to, to say and put forward on that. And then some of that, you know, could come from the select board. Also, we're working on a master plan. So, there's a lot of areas to draw from, from that, but I think a lot of that's gonna come from, you know, the people you're meeting there along, and, and in big part from the, the council on aging. For the, you know, establishing a long-term direction.
What would be your availability if you were the successful candidate?
Um, I would want to give my current employer proper notice, so, um, I would want to give them at least a two-week notice.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I definitely feel concerned about that.
Other questions, comments? Arthur, any other questions, comments? Okay.
That could be the service person.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Air Force, yes. Air Force, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Army, but I won't all that again.
Oh, well, thank you for your service.
Okay, well, it was very nice to meet you, and thank you for coming.
Thank you all. Thank you so much for inviting me to come. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Yeah, nice to meet you. Very nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, um-
I, I believe the intention, from what you said earlier, would be to, uh, come to a decision at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which would be next Monday.
And, and we certainly encourage anybody who's here, or anybody who has listened to the interviews, to talk with Arthur, to talk with, um, Tammy, to talk a little bit about what you, what you saw. And it's very difficult in one interview to sort of figure it all out, I have to say. Um, we obviously will be doing some background checking on individuals, so that, um, if there's something of, you know, that we're not happy with there, you know, that a candidate may not be the one we wanna proceed with. Um, so, it's a big decision for us, and I don't wanna just say, well, these are the three, and we're, that's it. I wanna make sure that, you know, from the council's perspective, that, you know, people have heard it, and other people can watch it on TV, what they think. Um, the, obviously, the credentialing is, um, a- a- available for public review. We, it's been a, a part of our public documents tonight. Um, so if you wanted to have, uh, information about that, uh, you certainly can access it. Uh, we would, uh, I know that when we were doing the town administrator search, there were public people who called our candidates. We don't expect and hope that that will not happen. That is not a good way to have somebody say, can't wait to work for that place. So, I would just, you know, caution people on that. And, uh, Tammy, I know you had some, some interesting calls.
Yes.
And she didn't run screaming from the room, so that was a good thing. So, at any rate, um, yeah, we, we would like to be making a, a decision. Um, if, after, you know, everybody sits and thinks about this, um, Tammy, I'll be asking you to talk with individual, select- We can't, okay, we can discuss this in open session, if we choose to, um, as far as what we think about the candidates tonight, and give you an idea of what, where we're coming from. But we have not had a, a conversation, you know, where we say, what'd you think of number one? What'd you think of number two? We certainly can do that at our next meeting, if we decide to move forward with one of the candidates, to say, this is the one I really liked, and John may have a different one, Mark may have a different one, they all may agree on one, we may agree on none. In meaning that we would go out and get and advertise. So, um, Tammy will be talking with each individual board member, and probably with Arthur, and getting a feel. We'll be doing some reference checks and, um, trying to get an idea of if, if the skill set that we've at least observed very preliminarily is one, is real, that people would say, yeah, that person is really what you saw, um, and that person would be a great fit for you. We, I, I would tell you, we, we don't know that yet. We, we don't have somebody who's just out running the stables and they're saying, that's the person. If some of you have some feelings, please talk to Arthur, talk to me, talk to Tammy, talk, talk to one of us, because it's important to have, you know, input from those of you who are, you know, involved with the senior center. Um, we're very hopeful that we can find the kind of leadership that will, uh, make a difference in the long term for all of you. We, you know, and so we need, we need, you know, information back from you. If you have things you'd like to share with, eh, Tammy, that's great. We're not gonna say, oh, you know what so-and-so said about such and such, we're not gonna do that. We're just gonna, you know, ask you to say, I really liked the personality, I, I reviewed the paperwork, and I really thought this person had a skill set and, and, and depth, and whatever you say. Or you all say, we're done, we're not, we don't like any one of the three. And maybe we'll advertise again. I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but just to keep you-
Um, unlike some of the folks in the room, I don't think they had a chance to see all five resumes.
Right.
And I just wanted to point out, and Tammy showed me them all, that, um, I con- concurred with your three that you chose.
Yeah.
Without getting into anything else, I thought you did the right thing with the five.
Yeah.
I wanna give you that feeling.
And, uh, so, at any rate, John, Mark, any questions or concerns? Uh, we certainly will be deliberating about this with Tammy, asking her questions. She will be doing some of the reference checks and so forth. Uh, maybe some of us will also do a reference check or two. We're, we're very interested, I trust me, I know a lot of Vanpool people, so I will definitely be checking out the Vanpool thing, for sure. Um, so, that, I, I know I will look into, and, um, you know, we'll, we'll do the best job we can to bring the best candidate forward. If we could be here and, and done them on the first and say, no, we're not ready, we're gonna go out, or not, I don't know. So, because I can't speak for anybody else that's sitting here. Any, any other questions, any concerns?
No, um, you know, feel free to, to reach out to any of us.
Please do.
And, uh-
You know where my office is.
And, and obviously, if there are people in the audience out there watching, um, the candidates tonight, I, I made it clear that, it, you know, that they would be done, these interviews would be done in public so that they could see them. So, if they have, you know, concerns, questions, or suggestions, they can get to one of us or to Tammy and, you know, give us information from their perspectives. Because we're trying, we're trying to do the best we possibly can to make, um, the leadership in the senior center effective, and, um, and, and not only ef- effective, but warm and welcoming, so that we can bring senior center people, uh, the best possible environment in which to, which to work, and which to have opportunities to, you know, have social events and so on and so forth. This is a great, it's a great organization, and it's done wonderful things, and hopefully, we'll see more wonderful things moving forward.
Well, I would move to adjourn.
Yeah.
Second.
My motion to main second, is those in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Thank you so much for your time.